I'm just planning on speaking. Make sure you sign the log in the back. And if you have a cellphone, we're going to ask that you turn off your cellphones because we're live streaming and that could cause some interference with the video. We'll go ahead and get started and call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Kankakee Planning Board Meeting, December 17, 2024. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Warham.
Here.
Barry McCracken.
Here.
Arthur Wax. Susan Lopez.
Here.
Jose Arturo Barajas. Steve Case.
Here.
Beverly Hood.
Present.
Approval of the quorum. Thank you. Approval of amendments for November 19, 2024. Are there any corrections, changes, or comments? CNN will go ahead and file those communications.
Thank you. Prairie Walk is still being worked on by staff and will proceed to council when the development agreement is ready. The QuickTrip preliminary plat was approved last night at the council meeting. They had a first reading on December 2nd and a second reading last night. Since August, that's been in review with engineering. And so you'll see on the agenda tonight, actually, the final plat is on our agenda tonight, is we've been through enough to know that it's substantially compliant with preliminary and that we don't see major substantial changes that will occur. And we're trying to stay on a timeline. And so we will, we'll talk about it when we get to it, but that's where that plat is on, with council and then with us. And then the public here, the map amendment for 661 East Station Street was also approved by council on December 2nd.
Any other communications?
And I see a number of people who have just walked in. If I could ask you to sign the log if you're planning on speaking and if you have cellphones, if you could turn them off to prevent any interruption with the video that's live streaming. New business case PB 2024-11-1 Duncan Homes, Inc., a public hearing for major variance from the residential minimum floor area per dwelling and the residential front, corner, side, and side yard setback requirements for 408 South Dearborn. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? You can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Dustin Coy.
All right, Mr. Coy, if you could tell us about your case?
Yeah, here, I'm just applying for the variances, basically the setback variances and the minimum unit size variance. Just here to answer any questions. I believe you guys all have seen these plans before, so.
Any questions from the commissioners? Comments?
I have a question.
Chip, if you could speak into the mic, please, and say your name. Thank you.
It's time just to take advantage of the time. What do you plan on doing with the outside of this building?
Outside of the building, it's going to be a complete new facade, some renewed windows, new siding, obviously, and they're going to put windows in various spots along the backside, along the parking lot, so, and plenty of landscaping, of course. Yeah, but we're mainly probably going with like a white type vinyl siding. We haven't decided on that quite yet, but to be determined.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Dustin, Deb Terrell, when you were here last time, we talked about the portico and the entrance at the front, and you were uncertain.
On which part?
The portico and entrance at the front of the building.
On the west side? On the west side. Yes, I believe we're keeping that overhang right now that hasn't been determined yet. That's what you're referring to, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's undecided, honestly.
Still undecided?
Yeah, so it'd be a lot of structural to remove that. I would like to remove that, I just don't know what we're planning quite yet.
So the, how many units are we looking at here?
There's going to be seven total.
Seven. So that would be the entrance to how many of?
No, that one would be shut off there, actually. There is a backdoor entrance on the south side next to that overhang, and that unit there and the upstairs unit. I'm pulling it up now. Yes, what is your question exactly? Entrance there?
Yeah, how do you access all seven of the apartments?
Yes, so if you're starting from the inside there, that entrance right there, that would actually be the first floor apartment and the second floor apartment going upstairs. That next entrance is going to be solely that apartment only, if we're going from just the west there. The next entrance there, that's going to service two of the first floor apartments. And then if you go around the back on the parking lot side there, that backdoor entrance next to that overhang, it would be the southwest corner. That will actually service the upstairs apartment and the first floor apartment.
Okay.
A little hard to see on this drawing.
So people would walk around the building to get parking area from those?
Yeah, not much I can change about that.
Oh, no, that's.
It doesn't show it so well in here, but we're reducing that parking by at least half of the upstairs portion of it. And so we do plan on putting all green space and adding trees into that upstairs space.
Okay. And are you amenable to the idea of foundation landscaping and parkway trees?
Yeah, I'd be open to that.
Any other questions, comments? I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone in the audience has any questions, comments, or would like to speak for or against this case, you may come forward at this time. CNN, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I have a question, Deb Terrell. I have a question for the planning director. In the notes here, I see that all but one of the units falls within the 10%, which means that an administrative variance can be granted, minor variance. Have you granted those?
I would, I was waiting, I would have waited until this was considered by the planning board to see if it was okay. It's enough of a small deviation that it doesn't bother me.
Uh huh.
So I would have waited to see if this was granted.
Okay.
Are you ready to act?
In the case of PB 2024-11-1, a public hearing for a major variance from the residential minimum floor area per dwelling and the residential front, corner, side, and side yard setback requirements for 408 South Dearborn, I recommend that we grant that variance. I would like to see that the standards used to evaluate the variances that has been described for us is included in this report, along with the recommendation of planning as to where we go. Particularly, I'd like to read those things that the recommendation is that, number one, provide a mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs and small ornamental trees along the foundation of the north and west elevations that front public streets. Two, to provide parkway trees to be planted five, five parkway trees, five feet, oh, I'm sorry, five feet off the curb of the streets at the rate of one tree for every 50 feet on frontage along each street. For the subdivision ordinance, only oak, linden, locust, hard maples, or other long-lived shade trees are permitted. And number three, all improvements shall be submitted to the City of Kankakee for written approval and issuance of the site plan approval and building permits by the planning, fire, and engineering departments.
We have a second?
I have a question first.
Okay.
Are we treating this as one variance for all the setbacks and the minimum floor space requirement?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chip Warham and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Wax? Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case? Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variances are granted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case PB 2024-11-2, a public hearing for a major variance to allow for a reduction in the required parking for multifamily structure at 1260 East Merchant Street. Would the applicant please come forward? If you, each could, both can raise your right hand. And if you, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name, please, for the record?
Mary Townsend.
And if you could speak into the mic, Tandra.
Tandra Townsend.
All right, we have a recorder offsite, so we need you to speak into the mic, please. Thank you. If you could tell us about your case?
This case is for 1260 East Merchant. It's a 12 unit that I'm planning on doing a total renovation to it, and I'm asking for the variance for the parking. It'd be reducing it from the 24 parking spaces. We are planning on putting the two on the side of the building, if it's allowed, and then the two, the 1271 and the 1255 is where we actually have the parking there. We can get nine and nine, so 18 additional parking spaces.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
So just to confirm that, sorry, this is Steve Case. The total parking available under this plan, what would the number of parking spots be?
It'd be either 18 or 20.
Ms. Townsend, can you pull the mic down just a tad?
There you go.
20 with the two additional that you were seeing, if it's allowable? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, hi, Deb Terrell. Same questions that I had before. These two new designated parking areas, will you own those or will you lease them? You'll own them, okay? And will they be marked as private parking for your building?
Yes, designated to be up for that.
Okay, I think that's going to be necessary, like with a scary, you know, we'll tow you away sign?
Yes, well, overnight parking or unauthorized parking, yes.
Are you going to have to take down that little blue house?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
It's such a cute house.
I need to get the parking, so it does have to come down.
Is it occupied?
No.
Who fixed that up? Because it looks like it's been renovated.
Are you talking about 257 Orchard? Or which house are you talking about?
The one directly behind the building that's kind of a bright blue color.
We do own that, and last time we went there.
Oh, that's not the one?
That's not the one. We're now across the street.
We're across the street.
Yes.
Okay, okay, because that was a pretty cute house.
We did renovate it. That one we currently have renovated.
Okay, I had the wrong house. Good. I didn't hear that. Thank you.
So there's a follow-up question to that, though, so that the two properties, the 1255 East Merchant and the 1271, do each of those have a house on it now?
Yes, they do.
So two houses will come down?
That is correct.
Okay. And then can you tell us a little bit about the plans for landscaping? We've got this picture in our planning packet that shows all of the trees around the building in 2016 and absolutely no trees around the building now. You guys have plans for that?
We do have plans to put landscaping back at the building, so, but that was just not in this phase.
Sure.
But there is.
And I put it there.
We want to install a lot of cameras, and so the trees were going to block a lot of people's views as far as our cameras are concerned and stuff. So we're going to put some different shrubbery around. We saw the recommendations, so, yes, that's our plans.
Good, thank you.
What about ADA parking?
That is the one we're planning on putting on the side of the building.
The two?
Two, if it's allowed.
And what about the provisions for snow removal? Where would the snow go?
That, we would take the recommendation of what the engineering and the snow company is recommending. So we have to work with them on that one.
And you did mention there would be lighting?
Yes, in the parking lots.
Cameras.
And cameras.
How about traffic flow?
The, it's just a one-way end. You enter, as far as, are you asking as far as the parking lots go or what?
The traffic flow of the vehicles coming in and out?
It's a one-way in and they exit out usually on the alley side.
The other side?
So people will be backing out of the angled parking places and moving in one direction?
Correct, one direction.
Well, you know, I don't know that this is an appropriate question because it has little to do with whether or not this variance is granted, but what, how will you remove snow with cars parked there?
They do, like a lot of times, even in my other unit, we asked the cars to be, you know, they move and then the snowplow comes in, he plows them out, plow, get an area to clear the parking lot.
So you have to post it?
Yes.
For people to move their cars?
Yes.
Getting all Chicago here. Pretty soon we'll see dibs. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Barry McCracken, so it'll be marked on there which way they're supposed to be coming in, and it's one-way and everything like that, now?
Correct.
Is it going to be marked on the pavement or is it going to be a sign or?
Signs.
Okay.
Signs, and give you directions.
Okay, just from the looks here, I was just, I didn't know from the, through the arrows, I didn't know if that was for our purpose or for the purposes of, it was going to be on the pavement itself.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this case or has any questions, you may come forward at this time.
Hello?
Hi.
Would you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you would state your name for the record, please?
Michael Tricky.
All right, Mr. Tricky, go ahead.
Okay. I brought along a handout for slideshow to make this go more quickly. If I may hand on to each of the board?
Sure.
I also submitted, before I begin, I submitted a letter as well, which I hope all, each of you has a copy of. I'm going to just put this on the floor next to me. I own the house directly behind subject building, okay? And I bought the house, I don't know, about six years ago, and I asked if I could make it into a duplex, and I was told that it would change the character of the neighborhood if I did so. And I was also told that I would only have space for three parking spots in my backyard and not the four that I needed. So that would put a car out on the street. I was also told that I couldn't, I wouldn't have 1,000 square feet on each floor. I'd only have 800, 900 on the top floor, but 1,100 on the bottom floor. And so I was told for those reasons and mainly because I would change the character of the neighborhood, that I really should reconsider my plans. So I took that to heart, and I put substantial improvements into the house at 208 Sibley and made it into a single-family dwelling, which I'm leasing and hope in the near term to be able to sell maybe to the current resident, because I want to try to improve the owner occupancy percentage in the city in line with the city's goals. So I have been, for several years, have been collecting one rent instead of two. And I've gotten to know the neighbors real, pretty well, because two years ago, the Townshends presented a plan to put a parking lot at the other end of the alley, which was substantially short in spaces, and it would require people to walk 200 feet up the alley. And they asked for a space variance, and I pointed out at that time that it was also a distance variance, had to be within 100 feet. And I, and my, the people that work with me, we went around and we talked with everybody and a number of people in the neighborhood, and we submitted two letters at the time, one from me and one from 10 residents of the neighborhood, okay, objecting to this plan. And I attached both of those original letters as exhibits to the letter that I submitted last week. So you can see that too and see who signed. Okay, now, part of the reason that we're here today is because despite the fact that the Townshends were aware that there was strong objection to the plans in the neighborhood, I'm unaware of any outreach activities on their part to talk to any of the residents in the neighborhood about their plans. They're not talking to anybody. Now, let's talk about the main reason I couldn't have a duplex, because I would change the character of the neighborhood. So I put together this plan because it's hard for you to tell just by seeing a single drawing, and you probably have seen more, with two parking spots, what's really going on in the neighborhood. And on my Page 3, I'm talking about how this dramatically changes the character of the neighborhood. First of all, I've included in the last, say, 10 pages of this presentation, which I won't go through, pictures of all the houses along Merchant Street by this building and along Sibley Street by this building. I want you to understand that, as I was told in my meeting several years ago, these are all single-family homes, okay? And if you go by the neighborhood, you'll see that they're very, for the most part, very well-maintained homes. The yards are nice, people have a lot of pride and ownership. And you'll see on, a little later in the presentation, on, say, about Page 10, that right now, there are 64% owner occupancy in this section. And what you have to understand is if you approve this variance, you in essence are going to dramatically change the character of this neighborhood. You're going to, first of all, change the owner occupancy from 63% to 30%. You're going to flip it, okay? Secondly, you're going to fill the streets with incremental traffic and park cars. And I'll tell you why park cars, because even though they'll be providing 18 spaces and because perhaps of my comments that they didn't have any handicap parking, they say they're going to put two handicap spots at the end of the building, okay? But most of the parking spaces are going to be much further away than parking on the street. Okay, now you think about it, we're in Chicago, it rains, it snows, there's traffic on Merchant, they made no provision for crosswalks. And even though they're talking about snow plowing, where are they going to put the snow? When you look at the picture, there's no room on either side or at either end to put the snow. Are they going to dump it in the alley? Are they going to dump it on a merchant street? Where are they going to put it? Okay? They're putting the lots between houses. Okay, if you go to Page 4, or Page 5, rather, you'll see the map of the blocks right now, and you can see, or I've circled, where they want to put the two parking lots. There's houses and yards there, okay? Now flip to the next page, where I've overlaid where the parking lots are going to be. They're going to divide that block up into three islands of houses, okay? So instead of having a nice row of all single-family houses, now you're going to put two parking lots in there. Two houses are going to be ordered by the parking lot, and then two at the end are going to be left as an island, and then you're going to have all the other houses at the other end. So you've got three islands of houses now. So instead of having a nice row of single-family houses, you're going to have a hodgepodge of houses and parking lots and across the street at high-density apartment building. And this board was worried about me changing the character of the neighborhood by creating a duplex? What is this doing if it's not changing the character of the neighborhood dramatically? And this is not to some- And this is not just something that, it's a couple of cars on the street. You're changing the character of this neighborhood. And this, if you do this, you're basically ceding this neighborhood to be commercial. Now, there's three vacant lots on this block because this apartment building, which has sat vacant for 10 years and was on the demolition list, was a source of major crime and violence. My current tenant actually lived in this house as she was younger. And she experienced the noise, the violence, and everything. That section of Merchant Street used to be called Murder Road, you might remember. And this was one of the pinnacle spots where it was happening. And finally, it got closed down. After 10 years, this neighborhood has finally recovered. You've got 60% owner occupancy. And in one fell swoop, you're gonna destroy it. You're gonna destroy the 10 years of progress that's been made. There's three lots that are vacant on Orchard, where the people on Sibley own them. And they're keeping them vacant, why? Because they don't know what's gonna happen in this building. So this building is creating an anchor on development of single-family homes in this neighborhood. Because nobody knew what was happening. And the fact that we're here at this hearing tonight shows that their fears were justified. This building should have been torn down. As I'll show, as I show you, this building is so close to every lot line except for the one on the alley side, that the overhang on the roof goes right to the lot line. And when it rains, it drips down into our yard and creates a flood that then causes water to go into our basement. Now, we complained about this two years ago in the last hearing, it was in my letter. And my tenant has sent video to the Townsends. And at first, they said it would be taken care of. And now they have just ignored the last communications. I sent one of those videos to Ms. King. Okay? So you can see from the pictures that are on page, pages 12 and 13, you can see how close they built this building. It violates every one of your setback rules for the city. Every one of the setback rules for our city have been violated, except for the one on the parking lot side, I believe. But because the roof, the overhang goes further than the line, this actually goes right up to the lot line. And you can see my house, it drops the water right down on our yard and creates a lake. And it's not only because of that overhang, but there's a hole, as you can see in the pictures on page 13. There's a hole right next to the downspout where all the water comes pouring through. It's a waterfall. If our people, our tenants walked underneath there, they'd be bombarded with this water. And we keep complaining about this, and we get no response. So why is it that we should believe that anything that they're saying they'll do on this property is gonna be done without being forced to do it? They won't, we're concerned that they won't be responsible new neighbors. They, they own the house at 1271 where they wanna put one of the parking lots. They've had it for two years. And it's been kept in dilapidated shape. If I did this, I would have a code letter in no time flat. Yet it stayed like this for two years. Today, I drove by, they finally fixed the siding on the bottom. But it's been terrible. And if you drive around back, the garage is totaled. Well, maybe it's because they're hoping to tear it down. But still, the neighborhood has, they could have made some basic cosmetic improvements. So I only bring these points up because why should we believe anything that they're saying? They haven't reached out to the neighborhood. They haven't fixed the problem with the water that we keep pointing out to them. And they left their property in this condition. So this isn't, this decision on the variance of parking goes way beyond putting four or five cars on the street. You're changing this neighborhood if you allow this to happen. And you're changing, you're turning it from a, I put on here the goals on page, page This is what the city uses to evaluate properties that are in their inventory, which 1255 is, they wanna use for one of their lots. How they score. And if you don't score at least 50, they won't sell it to you. I tried to find a way to give them some points. I could for sure give them five points because projects result in rental properties. If I push it, if I really push it, I might be able to get another 15 points out of this. Gets them up to 20. The city's not even supposed to consider selling it to them unless it gets up to 50. And if they can't have that lot, take away nine of those parking spots, take away nine of them, now you're up to 13 cars that are being, that they're gonna be short. Now, understand that this building is not, it's not, you know, computer binary. It's either one or zero. This is not a binary decision with this property. You don't have to turn it into a 12-unit apartment building. I offered to buy this building and knock it down and put up two houses. But before anyone could act on it, the property went into the county trustee auction and the Townsends bought it. So I don't understand how that, how these things happen. I don't understand all the workings of government. But I'd still be willing to buy this thing. I'll pay for it, pay for it. Now, and I'm gonna need help to knock it down with the city because this thing was built in 1928. It's 96 years old. You know how much asbestos is probably in there? As they fix this thing up, what are they gonna do about the asbestos and all the other things? My tenant says she sees mice and rats going in and out of the openings all the time. It's probably infested. When they closed it up, she told me that there was like a carpet, an orange carpet of cockroaches coming out of there.
And Mr. Tricky?
You don't wanna keep, I'll finish, I'm sorry. My, my point is, is that you don't have to open this up as an apartment building. There's other things that can be done with this. And this is more than just a variance decision that'll affect parking on the street. It's the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case? You may do so at this time. Could you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And would you state your name for the record, please?
Dorothy Gier.
All right.
I just have one question. Is it that he's so interested in buying the building as versus someone, you know, having the building already and trying to make improvements and do whatever they need to do? So personally, I just think it's just the point that he wants the building.
No, I don't.
Okay, only one person at the time at the mic, please.
That's the perception of the whole case.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said, that's what I perceive that. It's not so much as the, as the building that he's concerned about the repairs. I think he just wants the building, period, himself. That's just what I think.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Townsends, would you like to respond to the comments? You can state your name again, so.
My name's Tandra Townsend. We are really here to show our partnership with the city. Our engineer drafted another concept map where we would not need a variance. And because of best practices, we had him go back. We followed the city's recommendation to get the 45. So that's the first thing. So we had already acquired enough spaces without the major variance. The only other thing that I can respond to is that, I think he mentioned something about the water. The only time that I've been contacted with that, we sent our roofer over there, we also sent somebody else over there, there was nothing else. So I'm not really sure about that. Some of the pictures that he showed you, four to six of those homes are abandoned. So, and they've been abandoned for several years over there in that neighborhood, those people have been there. So that's kinda my response and my rebuttal to most of it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Townsend, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where do you live?
Where do I live? I live in Chicago.
In Chicago?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you planning to put gutters on the building?
Absolutely. We're planning to do everything. And I found it interesting that he Google searched up of 1271, maybe like, probably prior to us owning it. It does not look like that in the front. So I thought that was a little misleading as well. Like he explained, he went over there yesterday or today, and it doesn't look like that. So I'm not sure why he didn't give you an updated picture. But 1285 is vacant, 1255 is also vacant, 1271 is vacant. There are several vacant homes over there.
So you own the two properties that you're planning to tear down?
1271, yes. And we're in the process of 1255, yes.
You own both of those?
Not, we're in the process of 1255.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And they're both unoccupied?
They're both unoccupied, yes, ma'am. And we did what the city wanted, right? Like they wanted to put it back on the tax roll, it's always been a multi-unit, and that's exactly what we plan to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hello. You raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Anything, state your name.
Jessie Bowler.
Okay.
I am the tenant that's at 208 South Sibley at this time. And when I first moved over there, it rained real bad. I did send photos and a video to Ms. Townsend. I don't know which Ms. Townsend I sent it to, but I sent it. Again, in August, I also sent the same, well, not the same, but a different video, letting them know that, hey, I sent the video before, I'm still having this problem, the water is sitting, and it's coming into my basement. So, yes, I did send several videos, and she said she was gonna send someone out there. What they, if they came, I don't know, but I know I'm still having the same problem. If it rained, that's the problem I'm having. I'm also the same person that lived there before they shut the building down, the Townsends didn't have it. And my concern is, I understand the parking lot, but everybody's not gonna park in that parking lot. And they gonna park on the side of the building, they gonna park wherever. And my, and another concern I have that I had before when I was living at 208, before Mr. Tricky got the house, was just the trash coming out the windows, coming into my yard, and the shooting, the, I mean, I understand that they wanna do the parking lot, I understand they gonna have this and that, but they're not gonna have 24-hour security there. People coming into the neighborhood, they doing different stuff in this, at that apartment building at the time. I'm glad it shut down. And like I told Mr. Tricky, at this point, it's nothing but raccoons and everything is in that building. And I don't know what they're gonna do, how they're gonna do it, but my concern is where I'm living at now. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? You can state your name again.
Mary Townsend. And I just wanna say that I don't know what the activities was at the building before that. I can't be accountable for that. But I do own more than just that building in the city, and I don't have any issues at any of my units. We do manage our units. We do our best at trying to make sure that we are not a nuisance in the neighborhood. So, you know, that's a concern. That I do own other properties, and they can look me up, and they can tell you that I really do work hard at managing it and trying to keep it as, like, keep all of my units up. And then I do try and monitor my tenants, you know, it is a process they go through. And I do work hard at if they're not complying, that we part ways. So that's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, you have any questions?
I have questions for Mr. Tricky.
You can step forward and state your name again.
Michael Tricky.
This policy criteria with the points.
Yes.
Your determination of a total of 20 points out of the necessary 50?
Yes.
Is that just your interpretation?
It is, it is, yes. I, I put an alternative plan just to put in two houses there instead and leave the other two over there. And I came up to over 90 points, just with my understanding of what each of those criteria is.
So I'm just wondering how this project would impact, like, the Riverfront Master Plan?
That's, that's a very good question. When I saw this, because I do look at houses for sale by the city, because that's what we do. We buy houses that are rundown, and we fix them up, and we restore them. And I, I saw this, and I said, how can they, how can the city possibly allow this lot to be used as a parking lot? It, it doesn't meet any of the criteria that are, that.
But how specifically does it affect the Riverfront Plan?
Oh, it doesn't. That lists a whole bunch of different things. It says, for instance, like, the Riverfront Plan, the bike plans. It, it gives some, for instances, what plans. And I, I didn't think that, I thought that it was out of conformity with the plan that had to do with owner occupancy. It's my understanding the city has in their plan that they wanna try to improve, increase the amount of owner occupancy in the city. And so that's where I thought that it, it wouldn't have qualified for that. And.
Are you increasing owner occupancy with your projects?
Um, I'm in the process of doing it. I'm sell, starting to sell houses on a land contract basis to some of my current tenants. And I have, we, we also buy tax liens. And where I've foreclosed on tax liens, I've offered the people who own the houses before, if they're not vacant, a time payment plan to buy it back. And I've sold two of the houses back to the people that way. So my, I, I'm very much in tune with the idea that owner occupancy helps to stabilize the community. And that's part of, part of the reason I, why I was, I didn't like this plan, this parking plan, is because you were knocking down two single-family homes to put up parking lots. And so there's no chance to, to convert those back into residences and owner-occupied residences.
When you purchased the house next door to renovate, you were aware that the building was there?
I was, certainly.
And it was empty?
I, I was. And I saw, and I also knew that it was on the demolition list. And so I, it had been vacant for, I don't know, at that point, five, six years. And I thought, maybe, maybe in my, without fully understanding, that the fact that it was vacant and it was on the demolition list, that it was eventually going to be torn down. I pointed out, by the way, in my, the hearing, when they told me I was changing the character of the neighborhood by putting in a duplex, I said, well, how can you say that? I have a duplex on one side of me, which is the only duplex in the neighborhood. And I have this gigantic apartment building on the other side of me. And the board member who was sitting right there made the statement, well, that building should never have been built. sitting right there made the statement, well, that building should never have been built. That's what he told me in response to, to it. So I was led, through, through the comments and their activity, I was led to believe that, and perhaps just my own thoughts, my own perception, that that building was going to be torn down.
Is the building still on a demolition list if this doesn't go through?
No.
And the Townsends do own the building now?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Well-
I can also clarify that the, this policy criteria is for the program with the city's properties. And that, I mean, I think that even for me, just looking through this, for this project, I mean, I, I think that, like, in the city's comprehensive plan and also in our code, our zoning codes, it, it promotes housing opportunities. And so there are some things in here that, there would be points added for something. This is a very old building. It might not be what some people would consider significantly historic, but it is a historic building. And it does have value in rehab. And so I think that there, I think that this, I appreciate the effort in this being here, but I think that the decision-making for this and this policy criteria is set forth with a committee and the, and the city council for their lot program that they own, that the city owns.
Even if you gave them the full 10 points for that, it'd still be less than 50.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Tricky?
Yes.
You mentioned that in terms of dramatically changing the character of the neighborhood, you mentioned in your report decreases home values.
Yes.
Is that, is there any evidence of that? Or is that interpret, your interpretation?
Well, I, I've been doing real estate for 45 years. And both from the lending side and from the property side. And I'll tell you, if you fill up the, the streets with, with parked cars, if you increase, if you tear down houses and intermingle parking lots in the middle of houses, and you, you change the composition of the neighborhood from 60% owner-occupied to 30% owner-occupied, and put high-density housing in the middle of a single-family neighborhood, re, reiterate it, that the housing prices will come down. And I think that although last time a number of the neighbors came, tonight they didn't come, except for a few, like, like Ms. Bowler, they, they have strong fears about it because they lived through the 10 years ago when there was the violence. One of the neighbors was showing me the bullet holes in his fence. Okay? And I don't want to give you any more drama.
Right.
So, but I, I, I think that you can be pretty well assured, based on my experience, that the home values are going to come down. And I view it as a transfer of wealth, a transfer of wealth from all the people that are established in the neighborhood to Tapec, to the Townsends. That's what's going to happen. Because they bought this property at a county auction for $57,000. I don't know how much they're going to put into it, but they'll be in a very low per-unit cost. And they'll, they'll collect a lot of money on it each year. So they'll be getting their rents and everybody around them will be suffering from the difference in aesthetics, the difference in density, the difference in traffic, and the, the whole nature of the neighborhood is going to change. And if that's what you want to do, that, that's fine. But understand, when you make the vote, that that's what's going to happen. And so that's why we're having a public hearing and that's why I'm here and presenting these thoughts.
Okay.
Okay?
Steve, did you have a-
I have a question for our planning director. So just, just so I'm clear and understand this, north of Merchant Street, those are all primarily single-family residential, but it's currently zoned as C2 commercial?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And because it's zoned as C2 commercial, then these parking, these proposed parking lots are within an appropriate distance?
They are. So in the, in the parking code, there are regulations for using residential-zoned lots for off-site parking and also for commercial. And in, previously, Mrs. Townsend had a property down the alley that she was looking to put parking on. It was zoned residential and it needed to be within 100 feet. Technically, I don't think that property was within 100 feet. And if you're putting it on off-site parking on a residential lot, it also needs a conditional use permit as well, not just the variance that it would have needed for the distance. But if it's a commercial lot, it has to be within 300 feet, which is a much larger distance. And it also does not need a conditional use permit, it's just permitted by right. So there's no additional requests that would be, needed to be made to the planning board in order to utilize those properties. I know Mr. Tricky asked me about the, the zoning on here, thinking that it was a mistake or that had not been recently changed. But I did go back to, I, I put some stuff in the staff report, but I went back to the old zoning maps. And it does appear that this area has been zoned commercial for a very long time, decades, in fact.
Zoned commercial for a very long-
Correct, yeah.
So-
And prior to that, actually, in the really early zoning maps, it showed multifamily.
And again, clarification then. So these would be considered commercial parking lots, even though they are for a residential?
No, they're commercial-zoned lots that will be serving, so the way that it's written is, is off-site parking serving residential.
Okay.
So the purpose of that is only to serve residential. You can't put off-site parking. And that, that section of the code does not talk about serving it for commercial as to for regulations for that. But this is for residential serving.
Thank you. So then I guess my follow-up question is, we've been doing, and I think it's on our agenda, to do some rezoning that gets the zoning more in alignment with how the properties are being used. So I could see us, you know, down the road, having a homeowner on this side of the road who wants us to rezone this section as residential, keeping with the usage. So in that, in that instance, then, would we have, if we, if this came up, then we would, we would rezone it residential, but we would have these, these particular lots that were still spot-zoned commercial in the midst of that residential?
Yeah. We could, I mean, at that time, we could still rezone those residential if we wanted to. They would then become legal non-conforming as to that, this little parking regulation that would require a conditional use permit and also a distance. So that if something ever were to occur, I mean, a damage to a parking lot is not quite as frequent as, if it's abandoned. So like, if the building stops being utilized and these are tied to that ownership and they stop using that parking affiliated with that building, then in order to bring it back into compliance, if they lost that nonconformity, they would need that, if we, if we had rezoned it to residential, they would then need a conditional use permit and also a variance in order to use the lots as well. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for explaining to the novice. So then just my last question, have we had any communication from the houses that border these proposed parking lots?
I have not had any phone calls or I haven't had no communication from anyone, except for Mr. Tricky.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other-
I will also say, just on this map, just so you know, my, how I did this, the, the ones that say rental on here were actually verified with rental housing licenses. They are not listed with rental housing on this map if, if we didn't actually have a rental housing license on it. There's a possibility that there are rentals out here and we just don't know about them. They're not registered with the city. But the ones that are on this map that show rental are, they have active rental licenses with the city.
Bering the Kraken, I got a question about the parking lots. They're, for, because they can be used for residential purposes, what you're saying, but not commercial?
Correct.
So something on Court Street, you know, if this building was abandoned at some point in the future, they, you know, they have their own tax ID numbers and everything like that, they want to sell it for a commercial building, they would not be able to do that?
So they cannot use this for commercial purposes. These parking lots are being permitted through the city for residential-serving use only.
So they wouldn't be able to be used for commercial, so a, an insurance company or something that, or, or another commercial building, they wouldn't, or a 16-unit building or something like that, they wouldn't be able to use that for those purposes?
So I think if somebody was trying to do a project or move in near here with commercial and needed a parking plan off-site, which would be this, they would have to come and find the city for that purpose. And I don't, I mean, I can't imagine this building would have to be gone and demolished, do you know what I mean, in order for it to be decoupled from that.
I guess one more question. Will the, the owners of the, the building, the, I'm sorry, the Townsends, will they have to come back at any point for any, you know, setback variances or anything like that as they're remodeling and refurbishing this? Do we know anything about the unit sizes of the, are we going to have variants?
They're small, we do. And I, I apologize I didn't include that table that Mike had in his, he had a, a table in the 2022 plan showing where those nonconformities are on the setbacks and things like that, that she's not requesting right now. So there is risk in her investment in the fact that if something were to occur to the building, that those units, if it was built back, would have to be built to that 800 square feet. The setbacks would have to be met, which is probably not going to happen. And so, but again, we looked at these setbacks on this previous case tonight, which I supported because there were clear-vision triangle clearances and things like that that are in place. This building is very close to an adjacent building. It does not meet those clear-vision restrictions. So we, I wouldn't support setback reductions on this building because of that. It creates, there's some life safety issues, I think. But I think, and especially the way Mike Hoffman also presented it previously, is that they don't have to bring those into compliance. They've been in existence for a long time. So what trips up with our, the code here is the parking requirement for the use.
But again, that we would have to see this again. There would be more, almost certainly there would be other variances that would need to be granted before this was opened up for rentals.
No, because they're already existing.
Okay.
You know, like Dustin's project from previous, he's creating brand-new units inside that building.
Okay, thank you.
These build, these units are, these, these 12 units, and we confirmed with code, have been in existence since the 80s.
So what about property setbacks, though?
That was the third time. But she did confirm, Timor did confirm they've been in existence for a long time. Say that again.
What about property setbacks, though? Like, distance between the buildings and-
So they don't have to, they don't have to make those compliant, just like Dustin. He's, he elected to request those because it secures his investment. And then he has to go through the process of it being vetted by our staff and planning board to grant them. He could have been denied and still would have been allowed to occupy that building because the structure itself, while it doesn't meet it, he's providing the parking for the use inside. Right. So, but there is, if you're not granted those setback variances, there is risk to the investment that you could not be able to build it back. And Mary understands that.
Thank you.
But again, I would not support the setback reductions on this building.
So the question on my mind right now is, what comes first for the Townsends, rehabbing the building or knocking down the two houses and putting in the parking? It would seem like a logical progression to me to take care of the building first and then the parking?
They have to do all of it. So they, she, her next step with us would be to, to submit for site plan approval review. And we would have to go through engineering review and approve landscaping, lighting, engineering, all of that. And then she could apply for and get building permits. It would all have to happen at the same time. It's one project together.
Right. But I'm talking about the actual work being done. When, when she has all her permitting in place, it seems like she would rehab the building first.
I think that would be up to Mary, how she wants to proceed with her project.
It, it just seems like that would be the logical progression. And what I'm thinking here is that if you do run into, you are taking a risk, and if you do run into a problem and you can't get the necessary, you can't go forward with the building, you won't have already torn down the two houses and put in the parking. Is that correct?
Could you come to-
She's going to have to work on this simultaneously, I think.
Really?
Could you come to the mic, please?
Is it an environmental issue, Deb?
I'm concerned about Mr. Tricky's idea of changing the neighborhood by taking down two existing houses and trees for this project. If she runs into a problem with the building itself and isn't able to move forward, I would like to know that we hadn't already torn down the houses and taken out the trees.
The plan is, is really going to be concurrent. We're going to be working on the building and going ahead and tear the houses down to get the parking lot, because we need the parking spaces.
Okay.
So I've already got the demo bids for, to get them, and the parking lot, which I did provide. So it's really to be working on just one project to me.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mary, this is Mary Townsend.
Bering the Kraken, can't we get it so that they can finish the building first and
then work on tearing down the houses? So if it takes a year to, to work on all the units and everything like that, we don't have, and you know, they don't finish it, they don't tear down the, the homes, and they have then empty parking lots for anybody else to be using?
I think the concern that I would have with that, which we have with other developers, is that they get to a point where they've finished a building and they want to put occupancy in it. And then the city loses its leverage for finishing the rest of the project. So I think the timing of it is very critical on our end to make sure that, like, if we condition that on, on this, with this variance, and it ties the city staff's hands with that, like, in that timing, and then we don't have that leverage, it could be a problem in the future. So- I hear, I hear what you're saying. And I don't know if we can, if you would allow staff to work with Mary on a timeline that would work for her, but I would rather us not have our hands tied with that in, in some kind of legal requirement. I also wanted-
Up to a percentage, 50% is completed or something before they do that? Rather than have them do that first and then they start working on, it just, that wouldn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Yeah, but it's, it's like she's saying, that, that is leverage. And it's leverage that's very important for the city to have. I hadn't thought of that. So I don't think I would want to cook it into our motion.
Uh, I, no, not now. This is discussion amongst the planning members right now. I also want to clarify, and I don't have the language right in front of me, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that there is a requirement in the parking, the off-site parking, that requires her to tie these properties to this, these parking lots to this property legally. There is an, an easement that has to be granted or something like that to, to these two. Yeah.
So would it all be, Bering the Kraken again, would it all be one tax ID number, then? Is that what you're saying?
It's not. There's a, and I, I'm forgetting the wording, but I'm going to try to look it up here while you guys are discussing and see if I can find the actual language. But I know, I think there's a requirement in there.
So if, if it doesn't get finished for some reason, what happens then?
To the, well-
Building, if, if we've got two, two empty parking lots, you know, there, and then we just have two empty parking lots with a building that's not been completed possibly?
Potentially.
Any other questions?
Does, and I'm sorry, maybe this is a question for Mrs. Townsend. Do, are the other properties she owns, other apartment complexes in the city of Kankakee?
Yes.
Okay.
You can state that for the record.
Mary Townsend, yes, they are in the city of Kankakee.
Are they similar in, in terms of size or units or, I don't know, the types of neighborhoods that they're in?
They're just like a block away from there.
Okay.
So one is a little larger and a couple of them are smaller, but yes. They're all in the city.
They're all multifamily or are they single-family or a little bit of both?
I have a mixture.
About how many units?
I have a 20-unit, five-units, some two-units, some single-units.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are you ready to act?
I am.
Okay.
Let me get my ducks in a row. Let me get my ducks in a row here.
Oh, may, can I clarify? Hang on just a second. I don't know what your motion is going to be, Member Terrell, but I made some notes while you, the planning board was talking, because I made a healthy list of conditions, but I noted that there was discussion about marking the parking lot private, marking it one-way, actually signing it one-way, providing for security lighting and cameras in the parking lot, and I think that may have been it. But I, those items are not in our codes, so if we want those tied to this motion, I think we'd need to add those in as conditions.
All right.
And then I don't know if we want, if Member McCracken wants to add any condition for them to work with staff on a timeline that would work for secure, I understand what you're trying to say, like you want to make sure that the parking lots don't, that there's work being done on the building and they can proceed, they know that they can proceed and will proceed without the houses coming down. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry to complicate things, Deb.
It's already complicated. Okay, we're considering case PB 2024-11-2, the request for a major variance to allow for a reduction in the required parking for a multifamily structure at 2060 East Merchant Street, which will not be a recommendation to City Council, but will be decided by this board. So that makes it, you know, the onus is on us to do this right. I'd like to explain my thinking in the motion that I'm about to make. We do have a tremendous need for affordable housing in Kankakee. This is not something that is just, things have changed. You can't look at the community pages on Facebook or somewhere without seeing people posting, "Please help me. I cannot find an apartment. My family needs someplace to live." We have a desperate need for more housing and affordable housing, and especially in certain parts of the city, and this is one of them. As far as the crime is considered, first of all, that's not something that this board, that's not our purview. We're basically a board of zoning appeals. So our job is to look at the footprint of this property and the use that is being proposed, and say, is this an appropriate use for this property? Crime is not something that we can consider, but if we were to consider it, the crime rate 15 years ago is dramatically different than the crime rate today. And if we were to use crime 15 years ago as an excuse not to provide housing and move forward with a viable project, we would be remiss in our duties. I'm not in love with the idea of taking down two houses and especially trees, but parking does need to be provided, and it is a part of the project that we, as the city, are requiring. So it's not like the Townsends are just looking to make life easier for themselves. They're doing something that we are requiring them to do, to provide this parking. So variances, when you consider a variance, you have to consider hardship. And is the hardship on the part of the person making the application, or is the hardship something that's thrust upon them? You know, if somebody wants to put in a 12-car garage that's going to take up all the space on their property because they collect cars, that's not a hardship. That's their collector. That's a hobby. If somebody has no parking because the city changed the parking regulations on their street and they need to build a garage, that's a viable hardship. So the hardship to me in this, in considering this variance, is that we, as the city, are requiring them to provide this parking. Street parking is inevitable, and it also is changing. People own more cars. I know, I've lived in my house for 35 years, and in my neighborhood, when we moved in, nobody parked on the street. Everybody parked in their garage or their driveway. Now there are 20, 30 cars lining our streets in a subdivision, and we still have neighbors that say, you know, "I don't like that your son parks in front of my house." Well, I'm sorry, it's a city street. It's dedicated right of way. Anybody can park there. We just, you know, anybody that spends a lot of time in other cities like Chicago, even Naperville, places like that, parking's tight everywhere. And as I have driven around these blocks multiple times, there is still enough on-street parking that that shouldn't be an issue. Also, if the units themselves are small, you're not going to have three cars per unit. You might have less than one car per unit, because you might have people living there that don't have a car. So the motion that I'm about to make, and I'm not going to try to go through every finding one by one, so I'm going to request that we attach the city's comments, but the motion I'm about to make is that we allow this major variance with two restrictions. The first, refresh my memory, what you wanted for the first restriction?
In addition to the conditions that are in the staff report, one through eight, these, these, right?
Yeah, you added one, having a memory.
What I heard the planning board talk about was marking the parking lot private.
That was it.
Marking it as one-way, and providing for security, lighting, and cameras in the parking lots, which I think Ms. Townsend said she was planning to do, but the only way for us to make that happen in the plans is to require it with this condition, because it's not required.
Right. I think that we should require those conditions in addition to those that are set forth by the city. And I would also like to add that we have the promise for the neighbor that has the water problem, that gutters be installed and that water problem be fixed. And that's my motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Steve Case. Any questions, comments?
I would like to add one thing. I did find the language, it is a restrictive covenant, and I don't know why I couldn't bring that to my, my brain, but it will be, has to be recorded against the property so that they're tied to this property for usage. So I know you asked about being able to use it somewhere else, but this covenant would run with the land, and so it would tie it to these properties.
Roll call.
Time in memoriam, basically, not for their ownership, correct?
Say that one more time?
It's not...
For the use, not necessarily ownership. So yes, if it's sold, it's a restrictive covenant, runs with the land.
Okay.
Just one question before roll call. The recommended conditions have been provided to the Townsends?
Correct, yes. I sent them last week.
Okay. Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Rorham?
No.
Barry McCracken?
No.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variances are approved.
All right. The next up.
Mrs. Townsend will need to, she's still working with the city on the ownership of the property, but she would need to apply to the city for site plan approval. I think that's probably step, step one. She can apply for building permits simultaneously if they want to, but they cannot get a building permit until site plan approval is approved.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next case, PB 2024-11-3, a public hearing for a major variance from the residential district front yard fence height requirements for a property generally located at the southwest corner of West Chestnut Street and North Washington Avenue with a property tax ID PIN number of 16-09-32-319-002. And the applicant is before the east. If you could raise your right hand, if you swear to tell the whole truth, it doesn't bother the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Father Nick Granias. I'm the pastor of Greek Orthodox Church that owns the property and who's filing for this variance.
All right. If you could tell us about your case, please?
Sure. This property is right across the street from our church, which is in its 100th year, built in 1925. We own most of those empty lots that you see in that picture, including the parking lot of the, of the church and the two big lots south of the house that's by, that's next to the square. The square is where we, is where, in one of our old properties, we chose to put a memorial garden. So in this past year, we landscaped all of our church property and landscaped that memorial garden, the part that's in the red box, ultimately put up three monuments with plaques on top of the monuments, have installed six stone benches, have three lands, three asphalt circles with a path going through the property. It's meant to be a peaceful gathering place, a place of solitude and of contemplation. Each, each circle has two benches and the plaque, and we wanted to put a fence around it, not to be forbidding, but to just set it apart. The fence would have two five-foot openings without gates, so that people could enter from either the Chestnut Street sidewalk or the Washington Street sidewalk. In our last steps of putting the fence up, we learned that we were only allowed to put up a three-foot fence without a variance. If we want to have a four-foot fence, we need a variance. We could have put a three-foot, a four-foot fence around about 65% of the, of the, of the site, but the front, the 50-foot front across the street from the church and two 12-foot setbacks would have had to be three feet, which is, we looked in Congress and would just wouldn't have worked. A three-foot fence also wouldn't work for our purposes because it's an attractive nuisance. If it's only three feet, kids will jump it, just didn't think it was a good idea. Although we did contemplate that when we learned we could do a three-foot fence without a variance. But ultimately, we said, no, it'd be much better to have a four-foot fence. It would be the kind of fence that's in that photograph, an aluminum, aluminum fence. It would be a rectangle, corresponding exactly with that red, with that red, that red rectangle right there with the two openings. Everything is done except the fence. We dedicated the memorial garden on Veterans Day. It was really a beautiful ceremony, and it's already a beautiful place. And the efforts of landscaping and of improving the neighborhood have paid dividends. Our neighbors talk to us all the time about it, and they've become very protective of it, as a matter of fact. So it's in, it's been a, is already achieved, part of what we wanted to achieve was just to become a more integral part of our neighborhood. Because with a church 100 years old, there had been contemplations lots of times to move or do something else, but we're committed to staying where we are and for the, for the long-term future.
Any questions?
Chip Rorham, I have a question for you on the, the lot itself. I see the red rectangle on the east side of that lot. What's, is the, is the west side of the lot part of your property, or is it a separate parcel?
I think it's all one parcel, but we, there's a big tree. Anyway, that's what, that's what works as, as a memorial garden for us. To go any further would have become cost prohibitive, and it would have taken away from what we're trying to accomplish. Just, we just subdivided it. For instance, when we have our festival, and this year when we had our festival and that was already landscaped, we just used the back of the property for parking. Up, up to, up to this year, we'd use the whole property for parking, as well as those, those two lots on the, on the south side of the houses.
Right. So, so how would you take care of that parcel, that part of the parcel?
Well, we take care of ourselves, volunteers from, volunteers from the parish. We water, we water it. We, we, you know, we, we take hoses from the church across the street. We water it, we, we tend it. Steve Tholz has helped us a lot in the landscaping. We're really, really proud of it. It's very attractive. It'll just get better. A friend of ours was so inspired by it, she gave us an magnolia tree, which we just planted just a couple weeks ago, just before the permafrost came, so we're, yeah.
So the west side of the lot, you'll take care of as well, even though it's not in the fence?
We, yes. We, all of those areas that we own, we mow them. That's about all we do. I mean, we mow them. We, we use them for parking occasionally. We haven't had any ideas yet for better uses, but, those were, a lot of those houses, a lot of those sites were houses of old parishioners, because, you know, people would, would live around their church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this case or have questions, you may come forward at this time. See you in a minute. Public hearing is closed. Your listeners.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act.
Okay.
In case PB 2024-11-3, the request for a major variance from the residential district front yard fence requirements for the property at the corner of West Chestnut and North Washington, I would like to move that we approve the request.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell. We have a second?
Second. Chip Rorham.
Second by Chip Rorham. Any questions, comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Rorham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Abstain.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variance is granted.
Thank you. Next case.
Tomorrow I will contact the building department and approve my zoning review for you, and then you'll have to call the building department to get your permit. Okay?
Next case, PB 2024-11-4, a public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 1713, 1733, and 1747 East Oak Street from R1 Single Family Residential to RIT Single Family Residential. City of Kankakee.
Yep. So I was initially contacted by the owner at 1747 East Oak Street. He had actually been previously working with Mike Hoffman and Emma Swanson at TSCA, waiting on our R1T zoning changes to occur. He's wanted to build a new home on this property. And Mike had mentioned that they were working on some of the updates to reduce the lot sizing for district. Basically, in order to build on this house, he would either need a variance for lot area, because the size is just under 4,500 square feet, or now that we have those regulations in place for the R1T, this lot could... or now that we have those regulations in place for the R1T, this lot could be rezoned. And so when he, Mike put him in touch with me, and when I went to go look at his property, I noticed that all three of these lots were undersized. They are all of a size that could be administratively varied for... The two on the right are actually very close to 4,500. The one on the west is a little bit under that. It's like right at that 10% threshold. But again, sometimes when we're doing these rezonings, we don't look at all those things, and the landowners would have to come in for those. But the two on the east side would meet that 10% deviation for an administrative variance. So that, the resident that was inquiring could build a house on it without having to come back to the planning board. So anyways, we just decided to move forward with a rezoning for all three of these lots because it seemed consistent.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for this case. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for, against, or have questions on this case? See you in a minute. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
I'm ready to move on. Regarding case PB 2024-11-4, request for a map amendment to rezone 1713, 1733, and 1747 East Oak Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R1T Traditional Single Family Residential. I move that we approve the map amendment and recommend that we forward this on to the city council for their consideration. So I guess we can't approve it. We recommend that it be forwarded to the city council. I would like to see the standards used to evaluate the map amendments to be attached to this motion and also the recommendation of staff.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Deb Terrell. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I got one question, Barry McCracken. So has the gentleman that's proposing building on it, does he, do you have a size or a floor plan?
Anything specific?
For his home?
Yeah.
No, it was, it's a single-family home only. We don't have any minimum size restrictions for a single-family home. He would just need to meet setbacks and any building coverage requirements, which the R1T zoning district would be much more abhorrent to building a home on than R1. I think R1 would be very difficult to meet the regulations for him.
Okay. I thought we had a minimum, you know, a size for homes.
For a single-family home?
Yeah. Like 1,200 or something?
Oh, it is for a single-family?
Yeah.
It's in R1, though.
Well, he would have to meet that regulation. Yeah.
R1T have a reduction in the square footage?
Yeah.
Is it 800?
Yeah, the R1T reduces it to 20.
Is it? Okay.
It's smaller.
I can verify. Just give me a second. R1T is... It is 800.
Has he talked about anything specific or just said in a general sense, I'm going to build something there?
He has not given any specifics to us. He does, I believe, and I just learned this in the field when I was putting the public hearing sign up because I think a neighbor knew that, I think he built the house next door. So there's a house to the east of us across the alley that he also owns or he renovated. So I think it's maybe about that size. I'm not sure. But he's going to, he would have to meet these codes, or he'd have to come back in front of you.
I was just curious if you'd proposed something specifically or?
Not anything specific at this time.
Okay, we hit them.
That's it for me.
Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Rohr?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The map amendment is recommended for approval, and this is targeted for the January 6th city council meeting.
Okay, next case. PB 2024-11-5. A public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 523 and 541 East Chestnut Street, 353, 383, 385, and 393 North Chicago Avenue, and 304, 322, 328, 340, 358, 368, 376, 386, and 396 North Harrison Avenue from C2 Service Commercial to R1T Single Family Residential. City of Kankakee.
For this one, staff was initially contacted by the property owner at 396 North Harrison, expressing interest in changing the zoning of the property. This is one of those areas that's currently zoned commercial. And we are looking to rezone this to R1T. I didn't cover this in the last zoning case, but, because we haven't done a lot of R1T rezoning. TUSCA did do a kind of a preliminary land use analysis of where they would want R1T to go or recommend. And since we don't have an updated comprehensive plan right now to target where future land uses would be, these would typically on the map where they were recommending, it's pretty much like north and east of the river in the older areas and west of the interstate. The one we just did previously is a little bit east of the interstate, but it's still within that area and obviously is helpful for those lots to be categorized as R1T. But generally, that entire area would be projected to be future land use of R1T because many of the lots in that area are pretty small.
Any questions? Public hearing is open on this case. And if you could raise your right hand, please, if you swear to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name, sir, and then we'll have her state her name.
My name is Eric Trujillo.
Reina Guadarrama de Trujillo. Can somebody lower that for her? Reina Guadarrama de Trujillo. Thank you.
Okay, so we're the owners, well, my mom is under her name, the owners of 304 North Harrison Avenue. With this rezoning, we just wanted to know on that property, when we bought it, like four or five years ago, it was rented out to four people and I guess first floor, second floor, basically. And we're trying to remodel it to do first floor and second floor for two tenants. Are we still going to be able to rent it out like that? Or with this rezoning, what's the deal here? That's basically our question because we're putting a lot of money in it. And I don't understand what, um, single-family residential, I mean, how does that work?
So you, I think we spoke prior to the meeting.
Yes, I really didn't understand, so.
Right, so I, when I looked at the area, I checked for if there were rental housing licenses or if there were existing, it's kind of a simple process, but we look for meters and mailboxes from the street. And I did not see anything in these areas that would recommend for R2. So it's probably because this one doesn't have a rental housing license on it. I think when you and I spoke prior to the meeting, there's not a current occupancy and it's...
Yeah, it's like four years. We're fixing it up.
Yeah, so it's been...
Also, I mean, we're getting to a point, but I mean, money's tight and we run into some problems. But we're hoping to finish it, you know, by this summer. But now with this rezoning, I mean, are we still going to be able to rent it out to two individuals or?
So the reality is, is this zoning, the rezoning here tonight, doesn't really impact your situation. And why I say that is that the commercial zoning would impact you exactly the same. Having it stay as commercial is the same thing. The reality is, is that your property has been vacant, that unit has been vacant for more than 12 months, which means that it's lost its legal non-conforming status based on the code's definition of that. And so he would have to come back in and either get it rezoned to R2, and it will likely need variances because this, I haven't checked it, and I can't, I think it's probably in the staff report, but the lot sizing is probably undersized. It just from looking at it, he's, he is in this, he's in the property that's on the, right on the northwest court, northeast court, northeast corner, that first lot. And so you can see it's relatively small. I think it's about half the size. My guess is it's probably 4,000 or under. So, and she only owns the one lot? She doesn't own the other parcels?
Well, I mean, that's the square lot that we got.
Just the one square lot.
I mean, because just the side of the yard, and I mean, they find us every time we don't cut the grass. So I mean, I don't know if that's with the property or not, but...
So I think the, for me, I think the residential rezoning tonight does help regardless because having it as commercial zoning is not going to help them in the long term. But the, the, the request for R2 would have to happen at a different hearing, and I think when it comes, it would probably come with variance requests as well, so.
So, well, just to understand, so if this goes to, like it says right now, a single-family R1, we wouldn't be able to rent it to two people, basically, the first floor and the second floor?
No, nor can you do it under commercial either. So you can't do it under either.
Because when we bought it, we were under the impression it said on the paper four units. But they were small, so we decided to go, you know, turn it into two units.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's when we bought the property, basically, in 2020. So like, right now, we're like, we're investing so much money in it and now we ain't even going to be able to rent it out. I mean, what are we going to do with that building?
You know.
I mean, it makes no sense to us, you know, we invested so much money, so much time in four years, and now we won't even be able to rent it out. I mean, because the building is tall and I mean, it's just the size of rooms inside. I don't know about the parking lot you said or something about the parking lot.
Have you been working with the code office and acquiring building permits the whole time?
I've had permits, but like I said, it's been more than a year that I haven't done nothing because I ran into some trouble.
I mean, I can, if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I can talk with you in the code office to see what your stat, the status is for the, for the housing units and their legal non-conforming status. I can, I can talk with you tomorrow about that.
So your phone number or something, this is over here?
Yes, you can call me that number. That's my direct number, yeah.
The 815-936-7314?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, like I said, because I mean, we invested so much money and now we wouldn't be able to rent it out and also to sell it, like we've done the building. I mean, it'd be a hard, a hard thing to sell. All right, I'll give you a call tomorrow on.
All right, thank you.
And so this is Steve Case. Just to reiterate what you had said earlier, either way, they're going to have to come back with some, you know, non-conform. And, but rezoning actually makes it potentially better
Correct.
for that situation. Okay. Thank you.
If you could state your name again, please?
Hi, Michael Tricky. I just have a quick question. The R1T, is that because you have to go to the lowest common denominator in this thing? Because it seems like some of the lots, they're quite big and some of them are quite small. And why wouldn't it just be R1 or?
So our previous city planner, who was here for five years, worked on a project for a significant period of time where they recommended the lots in the city to be rezoned to R1T. And predominantly, that area is north and east of the river, the Kankakee River. So residential lots that are in that area all the way over to the interstate and kind of north, I think, to the, maybe the railroad line, I'm trying to remember where that cutoff is. But it's a pretty big swath, so that the areas that are south of the river and west of the river that have larger lots, predominantly they're 7,500 square feet and larger, they meet all those criteria of R1. So both of the districts are single-family residential only. But R1T has a minimum lot area for existing lots that are, were platted a long time ago, of 4,500 square feet. And they also have smaller setbacks, so many of these buildings that have non-compliant setbacks would become compliant by, by being rezoned into those, that district.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act. Deb Terrell. In case PB 2024-11-5, for the request for a map amendment to rezone the properties listed from C2 Service Commercial to R1T Traditional Single Family Residential zoning, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to city council that this be approved.
Do we have a second?
Barry McCracken, second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Rohr?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The map amendment is recommended for approval and will be on the January 6th city council agenda.
Okay. Case PB 2024-11-6. A public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 454 East Birch Street, 480 East Birch Street, and 569 North Harrison Avenue from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R1T Single Family Residential. City of Kankakee.
City was initially contacted by the owner at 480 East Birch Street about the rezoning on this property as well. And it's also an area that's zoned commercial with residential housing. In this area, it was interesting when I looked at it, I did not want to rezone all of the properties. Some of this area to the south, particularly those three lots to the south of this, the last R1T property is, could be a potential area that could be redeveloped. There's two vacant lots and one of the buildings is actually currently a commercial building already. And then the other two lots that are in between, the one on the corner, on the southwest corner, and then the other long lot are actually owned by the church. And so I didn't feel heavily drawn to rezoning those to R1T either. So I just picked up those three lots that were on that block that are actually single-family homes and being occupied currently.
Commissioners, any questions?
This is Steve Case. Just a clarification. Is that, is that Morningstar Baptist?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The public hearing is open on this case. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against or have questions, you may do so at this time. See you in a minute. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
I'll try. I'm ready to make a motion to, on case PB 2024-11-6, that we recommend approval of this request for a map amendment rezoning 454 East Birch this request for a map amendment rezoning 454 East Birch Street, 480 East Birch Street, and 596, rather, 569 North Harrison Avenue from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R1T Traditional Single Family Residential, and that we attach the findings that we have here to that.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Steve Case and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warren?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The map amendment is recommended for approval and will be on the January 6th city council agenda.
Thank you. Case PB 2024-4-3, a final plat for a major subdivision for QuickTrip Corporation at Riverstone Parkway at Route 4552. See applicant present?
They are not here. I, I can give some background on this, so we had the preliminary plat approval, actually it was the second, or the August meeting, I believe, August 20th, my first meeting here. And I think in hindsight, and I talked with Mike about this, we probably could have just sent the preliminary plat ahead because technically the way the process reads in the code is that there's a hearing for the preliminary plat at, at planning board, and then it's approved by the council. And then site engineering kind of begins and they review plans, and then once that is substantially compliant with the preliminary plat, you can move forward with the final plat. So you're seeing it kind of all smudged together when in fact, we probably could have just pushed that preliminary plat in front of the council, probably back in September. But now we've been through engineering review and we see that it's substantially compliant, and so it has to come back to planning board for final plat, and then it would have to go to council again. So we're targeting January for a first and second reading, so long as there isn't any other major hiccup that happens. And we will also hold the plat until they are substantially done with engineering, before it goes on the council agenda. So we're just trying to keep it on a good pace right now, and you'll see there's a bunch of conditions here. I've, I went through these conditions with our attorney at the end of the week last week to make sure that these, the language in these and the requirements jibe with our agreement that we have with QuickTrip, because there's some regulations in our subdivision ordinance with regard to plats that have to do with posting securities and timing of when you close on property and dedication of land, but this agreement actually trumps what's in our code, so we just want to make sure that that's consistent. And so that, yeah, and so he, he's aware of these conditions, I've gone through them with him and is okay with that. So we're just trying to move, move things along. And I will say that I know their target is hoping for spring to break ground.
When you say it's substantially compliant, have there been any major changes?
There haven't been. In fact, they made some line way changes that Mike and I had recommended. There's a few minor things on the plat with comments from the engineers, but it's not anything crazy that they'll have to pick up in their next round of review. But no, not since you, since we've seen it previously, no.
All right.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public hearing.
We do not need a hearing on this. So the code does not require us to notice for the final plat, it just requires the notice and hearing for the preliminary plat. I also went through this with our attorney to verify that that was the case, and he read through the code with me at the same time. So it's just a public, at the public meeting, and then it has to be recommended by the planning board.
Thank you. Need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move on case PB 2024-4-3, the final plat for the major subdivision for QuickTrip Corporation at Riverstone Parkway, Route 45 and 52. Seeing that there are no substantial changes, I would like to move that we send this forward to city council to complete the process with the recommended conditions. One, a final review and approval by the city engineer. Two, provide the required security for any public improvements. Three, provide an ALTA survey of the dedication parcel. Four, provide a full covenant and warranty deed to all such dedicated lands and improvements in proper form for recording or as otherwise determined by the city attorney. And five, provide a title policy for the city in the sum of not less than $10,000 or as otherwise determined by the city attorney.
Motion by Deb Terrell.
Barry McCracken, second.
Second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warren?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The final plat has been recommended for approval and will be on the January 6th city council agenda if it is ready to go.
Old Business, case PB 2024-7-1, public hearing for a conditional use permit for a used car sales lot at 490 West Station Street by Head Start Steve Allen. No continuation for this request. And no action needed.
So I, just to give you, I brought my, brought the email with me because I printed it today because I wanted to remind myself what I actually emailed Steve because I email him every month. And this month, I did tell him that there was less excitement about continuing the case again last time and that he would need to be present if we were going to continue it, and that I could not guarantee anything. And I've not heard from him via a phone call or an email response. So I was explaining to Chairman Hood that in this case, the case itself is actually still open, and he will need to either formally withdraw the petition or it may just expire over time if he doesn't act on it, or he can republish if he gets all of it together, but he'd have to republish everything again and come back forward with another hearing. So there's not action required on this, it's just that the hearing itself will not get continued, and so it will lapse, if you will.
Chip Warren, Melissa, is there a time limit on when it lapses?
I don't know the answer to that question. She was asking me that, and I'd have to go look in the code to see if there's, if there's a timeframe on our submittals to see. I don't know. And there may, if there isn't a specific date in our code, there might be a best practice that maybe our attorney might be able to share with us for that. But I would strongly, I would try to get him to just send me an email. That's usually the best way is to have him, if he does decide not to move forward, to actually get a formal withdrawal email. That's really the easiest way to handle it, so.
Other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Deb Terrell?
Second.
Second by Barry McCracken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.